Who else are we missing? And? We have so many seats.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, at 6:30 PM, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and Renee, if we could please have a roll call.
Mr. Brewer? Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. McCallum?
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. McClure?
Here.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Ms. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Parker? We have a quorum.
Starting with our consent items, item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the March 14th, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting. And then item number two, short form plat, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP 2324-11. Consideration of a short form plat submitted by Gregory and Jennifer Emmert and Joseph and Terry Carter, Centerline Services LLC for McGee Street Animal Hospital Canine Pet Spa for 0.34 acres of property located at 1134 McGee Drive. And then certificates of survey, we have two. Item number three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2324-3. Consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Patricia L. Cook Living Trust, Mark Deal and Associates for Cook Family Farm for approximately 33 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of 48th Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. And item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2324-4. Consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Doyle and Janet Reich, RDM Surveying for Fisher Acres for 19.81 acres of property generally located a half mile south of the intersection of East Lindsay Street and Fisher Avenue at the end of Fisher Avenue. Does any member of the commission wish to move any, remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to approve and accept all of the consent items.
And I'll second.
In a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to our non-consent items, items number five and six to be read together. Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-46. An ordinance of the Council of City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman to remove part of Lot 1, Block 1 of Salier addition to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the Spud Simple Planned Unit Development District and place the same in the C2 General Commercial District of said city and providing for the severability thereof, 2505 West Main Street. And item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-16. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Nisa Ratco LLC, Max Bass Land Surveying, PLLC for replat of Salier addition for 0.543 acres of property located at 2505 West Main Street. And take the staff presentation.
Hello, I am Kelly Abel with the Norman Planning Department, one of the new planners. And let me see if I can figure out how to use this here real quick. Okay, the applicant is requesting to rezone from a simple planned unit development to C2. They're subdividing off approximately 0.543 acres to create an out parcel for a new Brakes Plus store. There are people here from Brakes Plus that will come up and talk to you. It's right there at the edge of the parking lot that you can see up there. It is currently being used for a marijuana processing facility. And yep, it's currently a marijuana processing facility. And they would like to allow the uses of C2 on the new, on the new tract. Staff does forward this request to the Planning Commission for the rezoning of the simple planned unit development to C2 General Commercial and Ordinance Number 02324-46 to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation. And Ashley Bernaski is here with Brakes Plus and would like to talk to you all.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Bernatski from Birmingham, Alabama. Work for Brakes Plus as the ownership side and our sister company, Expressable Change. We would like to be a part of Norman and parcel off this portion of the parking lot and put a new Brakes Plus up. We do consider ourselves more of a concierge service when it comes to automotive. Our hours are eight to six. We're closed on Sunday. We video surveil all of our properties afterwards. We don't keep cars overnight. We even have a partnership with Lyft, so if you drop your car off, we'll get you to where you need to go and get you back when your car is done, free of charge. And do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions by commission for the applicant? Thank you. Seeing none, I'd move to audience comments, if there are any for this item. Seeing none, Planning Commission discussion? And if none, I would take a motion for this item.
I make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
In a vote, please.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to our next item, number seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-47. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance number O-2122 amend the site plan and PUD narrative for part of the north half of section 26 Township 9 North, Range 2 West of Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof, 3766 East Robinson Street. And I would take the staff presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Fish with the Plan Department. We have an application from Jeffrey RC to amend his PUD Planned Unit Development Ordinance Number O-2122-10. The applicant is seeking this amendment to update the site plan that was approved as part of the original PUD Planning Development Ordinance Number O-2122-10 for the property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. As a part of this amendment, the applicant is seeking to include the addition of three commercial buildings, an additional approach, and to relocate the existing dumpster. These changes are being requested to accommodate their growing business. The locations of all the proposed changes are reflected on the updated site plan. This is the existing zoning for this subject lot. It is currently a PUD surrounded by an A2 to the west, an A2 to the east, and residential estates to the north. It is currently being used as a commercial lot. This is an aerial photo of the lot. This is a photo of the front facing the lot as of today. This is a photo viewing west of the lot. This is a photo viewing north of the lot. And this is a photo viewing east of the lot. This last photo is an aerial image provided by the most recent imagery from GIS. Other departments within the city have voiced their or share their concerns regarding the amendment of this site plan. Some of these comments are shown below. Staff presents this request for amendment to PUD Planning Development Ordinance Number O-2122-10 to Planning Commission for consideration. Staff is available for comments, and the applicant is also available for comments.
Thank you. Questions by commission for staff?
I have a couple. I'm reading where there was one building proposed, but you're saying there's three. Is that correct?
So the applicant is proposing to construct a barn. They are proposing to construct a new shop, and they are proposing to change the current zoning or the current use of their existing shop to be a grow facility.
Okay. All right, and then there's also a couple of references. As you mentioned, that there are some things that are not on the site plan that were concerns, that they weren't on the site plan. It says, "Staff is unsure what is intended regarding a structure or pavement, as this was not shown on the proposed site plan." There's a couple of those things. Were those ever worked out or addressed prior to getting here tonight?
I'm not, can you repeat the question?
So in the staff report under parking, it talks about, "Staff is unsure what is intended regarding a structure or pavement with regard to the parking." This is not shown on the site plan. There's, there were a couple of mentions that then, under the traffic engineer, staff is unable to approve the site plan submitted with this request based on some concerns. And what I'm asking is, were those addressed prior to getting here, or is this what we're considering?
I believe you're referring to the building permit that was submitted to the subject lot that was trying to construct a barn on the property. That was denied because it needed to be, it needed to go through a site plan amendment before it could be approved. I believe that's what you're talking about.
No, I'm just, I'm just reading from this, from this staff report.
Sorry, I threw him to the wolves tonight.
That's okay.
You're seeing, the site plan that you have is the one that we received the comments with concerns. Is that your question, if we, if you're seeing the one that can't be approved?
Yeah.
By Public Works? Yes.
Okay, all right. And then the other question I have is regarding the waiving of the landscape requirement. What would be the reason for that to be waived? It's a metal building, from what I'm understanding, and...
So our landscaping is tied to parking. So if you're providing six spaces or 900 square feet of pavement to be used for parking purposes, then you have to start providing landscaping. So if he's gonna have the six or eight spots, then he would have to landscape, and he is requesting to not do so. Which as a PUD is, that's something you can request.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff by commission? Can you maybe just address from our prior PUD that we approved on this item, or it passed ultimately? Was there already a provision for the front yard with the dirt park, it looks like? I remember it being a motocross facility, but it looked like from the aerials that there might be some type of kind of dirt park in the front. Was that ever in the initial PUD that was already there, or is that being included to be addressed in there? I didn't see it on the site plan, but it looked like a use that's currently happening.
I would have to ask the applicant what they use that for, but it was not part of either PUD.
Thank you.
Or not addressed.
Any other questions for staff by commission?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember this, this application that came before us previously. Wasn't there some fencing requirements that were? Have they been completed? When I was looking at that overview, I just didn't see much, so I'm just, could you point those out?
They've not been provided to my knowledge.
I'm curious, maybe this might be a Public Works question. It came up when we looked at this PUD recently about the driveways. I remember specifically, the neighbors across the street were concerned about headlights coming, coming in too, but also lining up the driveways on here. So adding the additional driveway, I'd be really interested to understand maybe the safety impact from the traffic standpoint. I see that it looks like this would violate engineering design criteria. I see that note in here. But maybe could you add a little additional information about safety in those drives in particular?
Sure. David Riesland, Transportation Engineer. You know, any applicant who wants to add an additional driveway that may not meet the engineering design criteria can submit a request for variance. I don't think everyone was ever submitted for this. If it were, it'd be submitted to the department, to the Director of Public Works. He would likely, he or she would likely come and ask me my opinion on this. It doesn't meet the requirements in the engineering design criteria for driveway spacing. And the further that you move to the west from the approved driveway location, there all of a sudden, there's a vertical curve in Robinson Street that creates a sight distance problem. It would be an unsafe driveway.
Thank you. And across the street, do we know how any of those driveways line up with other neighboring driveways? Does anybody happen to recall where this one would be and neighbors' driveways across the way?
I don't remember off the top of my head, no.
And I just mentioned that too, because we've had some, we've seen some plans that they were slightly offset and sometimes the challenge that that caused when there was heavy traffic coming through. So, thank you. If no other questions for staff by the commission, I would take the applicant presentation.
Hello. I don't have a presentation. It's just the site plan is all we're looking to amend. I think what we want to do is pretty straightforward. Before I forget, I wanted to address, Stephen, your question about the fencing. In the previous PUD, the fencing was allowed to be, to maintain A2. So that requirement has been met. There's no, there was no additional fencing requirements. And yeah, the driveway, the driveway situation, we're just, we need to have a turnaround, obviously, for business traffic. That's, that's the biggest deal, is having the, having big trucks come down. There's a residence on the property, and then we operate the business as well. So we need to have some kind of turnaround for big trucks that avoids big trucks having to go up into the residence. There's kids playing around there. And, I mean, it's just, it can, it becomes a safety hazard for whoever's staying at the residence. And the, oh, the dirt park issue you brought up, that's kind of exactly why we're trying to add buildings, is to get all that, all the stuff you see in pictures are customers' vehicles that have been brought to us, and we don't have room to put them anywhere. So, I mean, that's, we don't like keeping them outside either. I hate how it looks right now. That's, that's the whole idea of the, both the buildings, really. The main metal building that we originally put in permit for, and we're re-zoned this for, is, is to be the main facility. That's the main commercial facility. It's closer to the road. It kind of, it's separate, it'll be separated from the driveway, residential driveway. And house most of those vehicles. The barn that's currently constructed there now, it doesn't have a foundation. I constructed that without obtaining a permit first, because I was under the impression it was a temporary canopy structure. The ordinance is kind of gray on, on what, what that is. So I had, I put that up to get some stuff inside. For, you know, it's hail, it's springtime, so it's gonna be hailing, and I've got a lot of really high-dollar vehicles that are taken out there. So I had to get something up. That's what the barn is for. So, yeah, I mean, what we're trying to do is, is clean up that property and fix that dirt parking. That was never the plan, to have that many vehicles. We've been in business three years. We've, we've done really good. As far as our customer service, a lot of people, you know, bring their stuff to us, because we treat them right. And so that's why there's so many vehicles there.
Questions by commission for the applicant?
I have one. Refresh my memory. I wasn't on council when this first came up a few years ago, so precisely what do you do on this property?
It's a used power sports dealership, officially. It's, we, dirt bikes, jet skis, parts, sales, service, all of it, just like a dealership, for used power sports. And we recently got our license for automotive used cars as well, so things that are driven on the road so that we can operate all that. We could, you know, we do a couple of cars on the side, too. You know, with, with the economy recently, the dirt bikes and jet skis haven't been as popular, so cars.
So it's, it's mostly service and some sales?
No, the, the idea is sales. Really, sales is supposed to be the the main thing, come there and buy vehicles that we've bought and repaired or whatever. But, you know, we, we've got a lot of repeat customers. We haven't, we haven't put a bit of advertising into anything service-wise. Everything we have there is because of word of mouth. We do things better than, we actually fix a lot of dealerships' mess-ups.
Thank you.
Can you tell me about how many cars you're servicing on site at any given point?
Cars we do not service at all.
We'll say vehicles, motorsports, any power sports, we'll say individual units, however you quantify those.
Like three or four. Yeah, like actively servicing. Then we have others, a lot of times waiting, they've already been completed, and I give people two weeks before I really start throwing a fit about getting picked up. And then we're kind of backed out as far as getting stuff done, so a lot of people will drop off their stuff. Most of the stuff you see on there is stuff waiting to be pulled in or is already completed. Are you asking as far as, like, everything?
Yeah, I mean, trying to get a full idea of quantity of units, that we're talking about being stored or that are on-site. And then, separate from people coming in their vehicle to pick up and drop off, but the remaining units that somehow are on the property at a given point.
Yeah. I mean, that picture, that must, I think that probably is more of a busy season. I don't know how, I didn't catch the date that that aerial was shot, but that seems, that's pretty accurate for, you know, what's what would be average, I guess, which I would say, I don't know, 10 to 20. You know, when I first started the business, I bought a bunch of jet skis, because I didn't know, you know, I was just gonna flip them. I didn't know how busy it was gonna be, so I'm still getting rid of a lot of those. I bought them so that I wouldn't run out of work to do, and I never even got finished with all them, so.
So the parking that's happening in the front, can you kind of describe that compared to the site plan that we saw previously? You're seeing a lot of people are parking on there, but we didn't have that parking that designated as parking in the prior site plan?
In the, in the front?
Yeah, the, the dirt lot that we were kind of seeing on there.
I don't think that's parking. I just moved a bunch of dirt with my bobcat to kind of level out the land.
Maybe if we could have someone from the staff, maybe if you could help turn the pages back to see that aerial, so we can kind of see for reference, and you can help direct me. That would be helpful for me. Okay, so this is, looking at the bottom of this picture would be our main road frontage. So this piece in the front, what is this piece that's kind of circled by this dirt driveway and then the paved driveway?
Okay, so, not that it matters, but that's a chip-silled driveway, not paved. But the dirt, actually, that is what we want to move all the commercial activity to, just so you know. Are you talking about the vehicles parked on there, or just the dirt closer to the frontage road?
Just, what, what are you using this site for right now, that particular patch? I'm just interested in what you're doing with that currently.
You see where the poles are stuck in the ground there?
Yes.
That's the barn I just erected to, for storage, to get some of these vehicles out of the way inside and, you know, from the weather and all that. And then that is where the new proposed main 30 by 70 metal shop is also supposed to go, on the bottom side of the page, closer to the front, between the, between the barn and the frontage of the road.
Okay, and what about the remaining kind of area? What, what is the rest of that area being used for currently?
It's, I'm planting grass. It's supposed to be pretty
Okay.
Good to look at, actually. My wife's not happy about it either. She hates it, so it's, it's gonna be pretty green soon.
And then I, I see that also from your site plan, you're adding a grow operation also to the building? What is the?
Yeah, well, I built the, so that building has two stories in it. And I built the top story into a grow when the stuff was first legalized, and I've recently been given a license to do so from someone getting out of the business. And I have an uncle who is a good grower, so I'm just going to run a little grow upstairs of that, in that shop.
I've kind of monopolized the time here. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Make sure I'm not stepping on someone else.
How much traffic do you currently have? Like on a, on a daily basis, what's the average?
One to two customers.
Huh?
One to two customers a day.
Okay, and how do you expect the grow business to?
It's, it's grow only. There's no dispensary, so there shouldn't be any customers coming out there.
So, he'll be shipping or?
Yeah, we would be delivering it to the dispensary or whoever would be buying it.
Okay, and so is there an additional vehicle to do the delivery?
No, I have, I have plenty already. I think I'll use probably one, our old van from the shop is, I might turn that into, no, there will be no more vehicles.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm looking at the, the staff report at the very bottom and it says there are several problems, you know, that need to be addressed. Have you tried to work with the city to address these?
Yes, I think the only problem we really have remaining is the driveway situation. And correct me if I'm wrong, is there a way we can, I can see those notes?
So, under the utilities, the first one says, driving surface needs to meet city requirements, to be able to handle sanitation trucks. And there needs to be some kind of proposed width and widths and radii. And also, you need to include, you know.
Yes, okay, the, the widths, the radius, everything, that's all been added to the site plan. Or, and the narrative too, there's like a little, you know, addition in the narrative to footnotes, basically. So, yeah, that's, all those comments have been addressed. I know that the only outstanding issue is that, you know, the, the engineering design standard says that you can only have one driveway every 220 foot if it's, you know, 40 miles an hour and 330 foot if it's 50 miles an hour, it's a 50 mile an hour zone. The property itself is 220 feet. And so, it's just a, they, they, they won't, they, I guess they won't give me their blessing. I originally wanted to use that existing dirt driveway as the turnaround, but to try to appease them, I'm willing to spend extra money to run the, run the turnaround to the east and utilize the existing shared driveway that's there, the, the chip sealed one in So, in this picture, the aerial, the, that right, right, that right dirt drive goes away, we add the originally approved Bryant, crossing, driveway directly crossing Bryant, and that's the main. But it's able to go left and turn into the shared driveway so that big trucks coming can turn around. And that, that actually, that allows the radius for sanitation. And also, that solves my problem as far as I don't want commercial traffic going back in front of that house because, I mean, my kid's out there playing all the time. Regardless of who's living there, you don't want commercial traffic having to drive right in front of your door.
So, this dirt driveway, this one wasn't the one on your site plan. You were looking at putting the additional driveway on the other side, correct?
Correct. Well, I'm, the, the driveway that's already there on the left, it's kind of cut off in this picture, to the left if you're looking at it, that is per the original PUD, that was supposed to go away and be added directly across Bryant. So, it's like an intersection with Bryant Street. So, it'd be one driveway in the center, which I've, I just haven't had the funds to do it, but that's, as you can see, it's kind of, it's cut out and ready to be put in. I've had a, you've got a, I've got to do like some special stuff for the crossing of the lake water pump thing that's there. But anyhow, that was the originally approved driveway. And the chip sealed driveway that's cut off on the left is supposed to be moved, or is supposed to be removed, but a new driveway added to the adjacent property because that's a shared driveway.
So, and I saw that on there, but what, I, I guess, where does this dirt driveway come in? So, this was not on, it's not on either site plan, correct?
Correct. That's not supposed to be there. It was never supposed to be there. People are, it's, we started, we started using that when we first moved in and it's just, I mean, the trash guy uses it. Everybody, all the deliveries, they come in and they drive out through there. And if it's muddy, it, they, it's just real bad. But, that's why I need to have a turnaround. Like, to say that we just have a single driveway going to the shop and then these huge trucks have a, you know, 70 by 20 foot lot to turn around in is just, it's not practical.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
You are moving everything toward Robinson, right? Closer to Robinson?
Correct.
And I would really like to see some sort of landscape. I know you're asking to waive that, but the closer you move to the road, I think if landscape is green infrastructure, and I think it's important that it still be there, especially as you move closer to the road.
So, you say, I'm asking, what is, what exactly are you asking for? Like a, like a drawing or?
A couple of trees. Trees.
Oh, yeah. No, I.
Closer to the, to, to put it in front of the building as some landscaping.
I've been saving some pine trees to put up there. I mowed the lady's lawn next to me that the shared driveway is in and intentionally been leaving some baby pines that I plan to move over there. So, absolutely, like, the idea is this supposed, this is supposed to have a kind of doctor's office type situation, like, you know, it's like, it's not supposed to be super commercial. There's not going to be a billboard. It's just going to be a professional office for vehicles. So, it's also like a dealership, but.
Yeah, so landscape would be great as an addition to that, okay?
I can slap some on the site plan and I'll even come up with another drawing to show.
That would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
And if you're amenable, why, why then did your request come to waive the landscaping requirement? It sounds like you're willing to do the landscaping, but then it seems like that's in conflict with asking for the landscaping requirement to be waived.
Yeah, I think there might have been a miscommunication on that. I don't remember deliberately asking for that. I think it was just, I guess it was assumed on some level or there's some type of miscommunication. I, I have no problem providing a map of where I'm going to put some trees and I have a CAD program and I can even show what it'll look like.
Yeah.
Nathan Manuel, utilities engineer. So, we, on the south side of Robinson, the lines that are coming from Lake Thunderbird that are feeding our water plant are there, so we have large easements there, us and CMC D. So, landscaping there will be a challenge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions for applicant immediately? I'm actually going to call a five minute recess to talk with staff. We'll resume in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting back into order. Some questions have arisen regarding this project and this might be a question for our applicant too. So, one thing that would be helpful is if we could see the full narrative and seeing the prior site plan and the new site plan for us at Planning Commission. I have some concerns about Public Works not endorsing this project. I think there's some questions about landscaping. I guess the question I would have for you is if you were aware that you could request a postponement to make changes to this site plan based on that before we voted on it? And if so, if that would be something that you would want to do or would you like us to be considering this item and continue forward with the vote as is right now?
That's a tough question because I really want to get that building up and I really want to get this stuff inside that, you know, obviously, there's, there's, I've actually, I had to put a deposit on the building so that I could provide the blueprint so that I could submit the permit. So, I kind of have a deadline or I'd lose a lot of money, so. What, what, what kind of time delay does a postponement add would be my question.
So, you would make a request for a postponement to whatever Planning Commission meeting? I don't know if there's a certain timeframe for your application that'd be more of a question for staff, but we have other projects in here currently that have requested to postponement to a date certain of the May 9th meeting, for example. Since Planning Commission meets monthly, there's a monthly opportunity to come before Planning Commission to make any changes, to gain approval by Public Works for the project, to maybe address some of the concerns by commission that you've heard tonight. But, that is your choice to choose to make a postponement or to ask us to vote. I just wanted to bring that to your attention as an option.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And in a, in a perfect world, I would definitely do that. But, also, given the current situation, as far as what I've already had to put down on that building, I can't afford another month. So, I'm going to ask to vote and I also want to, I don't, we've, I've been told that Public Works is just not going to do anything about it. They're, they don't want to, they're, they're not going to accept any other driveway no matter what. So, that's fine. I know that we're going to have to go into the council vote, but, I mean, what I'm trying to do here is clean up the property, so I hope, I hope you guys understand that.
Before we move to audience comments, are there any other questions by commission?
So, I'm looking at, at this. Is this, this is your plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, is this going to create a loop? Is this just replacing that? Or are you going to have a loop like that? There's so many options.
The red is what's going in.
Okay.
The gray is what was already approved.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has the gray been completed?
Uh, no, it's not, it's completed up into the Bryant concrete approach.
So, when I look at that, that photo that we just looked at previously, I see the drive coming in, in a, in a different manner than what was on in the previous PUD. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So, so the drive is not, is not built to what the PUD specs were showing?
Correct. I just haven't done it yet.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that drive was, both those drives were already in existence prior to the previous PUD. Those are not added in after the fact.
So, if, if you're asking us to make changes to the PUD so you can do additional improvements, should we expect to do, to do actually improvements of the original PUD before, before we consider the rest?
I'm sorry, can you explain that again?
If the original PUD had certain things that you were, you were saying you're going to do.
Correct.
Put in the road in, in that, in that particular manner. That has not happened, but other improvements are, are being, are being completed.
They're being requested. That's the, that's what, that's, it's, I'm trying to amend what I want to complete.
Okay.
So.
I'm, I'm, I'll just simply say, when, if, if you're, if you're. I'm, I'm, I'll just simply say, when, if, if you're, if you're, if it's going to vote, I cannot support the amendment.
Any other questions for the applicant by Commission? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move to audience comments, and I do have some cards here from, I'm gonna call Barry Saltis up first. When you come up, please say your name and your address, and then, again, you will get three minutes to speak. If you would like a 30-second warning before the time is up, let me know. Otherwise, at the end of that time, I'll thank you for your comments.
My name is Barry Saltis. I live on Bryant Circle, so I'm directly north of the property we're talking about. I was not prepared to read the speech, I really wanted to learn more, and I appreciate this, to have me to learn more about what, what was going on over there. I do just, on the top of my mind, I think it's unsafe, that intersection just from Bryant itself. If you're going east on Robinson, multiple occasions, if I'm driving home, going east, there's a hill that you go down, and Bryant Circle's there, I always worry about what's behind me, the cars doing 50 miles per hour. So, I can imagine if there's large vehicles coming out of that property, making a left turn out of there, for example, that creates a high risk for, for danger, so. Again, I, I wasn't aware of what, what was going on, until Tyler, I knew he did a small motor crafts, I guess. I remember I spoke to him years ago, which, you know, sounded pretty good at the time, but now it's grown, and kinda like a junk, junkyard, let me look at the picture here, but I understand what you're trying to do, is trying to cover it up and such. But, my question to you would be, I don't know if, if you took a timestamp today and built your barn, would you be able to get everything in that barn? It just doesn't look like that would be the case today, so I'm not sure if that would cover really my, my opinion of this. Eighty percent, okay. But, but really, that's all I have, again, I didn't come to prepare to talk, I didn't know I was supposed to. I just came to kinda learn what's going on, and then see how the vote pans.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Okay, and then, I've got mic four, same thing, if you'll just come up and say your name and your full address in three minutes, and let me know if you'd like a heads up.
Yes, my name is Mike Four, I live at 3735 East Robinson. And, I have went around and got, wrote a petition, I've got 11 signatories on it, 10 of them are adjoining his property, or within the 350 foot of his range. Everyone that I had talked to, signed the petition, they are fully against any changes that he is seeking. He has also went ahead and built a building there, he just admitted a while ago, that he did without a permit. My resolution is, is him have to tear the building down as a penalty for building, building. We oppose any changes to anything that he wants to do. As of right now, it looks like a dump over there, it looks like a junkyard. All the neighbors have complained, I've talked to, none of them want it in the area. They don't know how the city council approved him a commercial business license. And I have pictures of the property that this does not do justice to. And I took them yesterday, if y'all would like to see them.
Thank you. And, just to confirm, we are in receipt of that, I guess it's a protest letter, and they didn't have a chance to get the radius map. We usually do see a radius, and they kinda tell us what percentage of neighbors and adjoining kind of have protested. That would be included in for City Council. Also, your photos, if you send them in in advance, the Planning Department can help you with that, and then those can also be reviewed in advance too, just to know any future steps for City Council, and just as a general education point, that you can always send those. We actually read through everything that gets sent to us in advance too. So, thank you very much. Any other audience comments for this item? Thank you, seeing none, I'd move to Planning Commission discussion. I just wanted to, I, I did not go back and watch our meeting minutes from when this came up before, but I did recall there being about three or four motorsports that units, however we wanna call that, that would be worked on on the site. We talked a lot about the dealership use and had some concerns for that particular area. Quantities of use really came up though, maybe you can kinda correct me, and it's a public record, I invite anybody to go check and see what we said last time. But, that was something that came up, and I am happy for people having businesses that are escalating, located here in Norman, but I, I have concerns of the escalation compared to what we were looking at before, what was in there, what's actually happening. I have some concerns about the road, the barn, and other things that have happened that were never on the PUD to begin with, they've kinda just been done. I have concerns that this isn't maybe the best, most neighborly trend, that there, whatever would get approved, maybe more would be done. So, I, you know, and I appreciate the honesty of that this would probably hold about 80% of those cars, but we already know that that wouldn't hold the cars. I don't think that the shielding and the impact to the neighbors have really been adequately addressed for this particular neighborhood. So, I have some heavy concerns about this project, and how it's even transpired since we saw it last at Planning Commission, and where we are today. And, I have concerns about allowing further increase to that. I think there could be some other site plans that could make a single drive work, and having circular options on site. I could refer to Commissioner Parker, if he would have any comments as to that. I would be very interested to hear, because I think there could be plenty of ways to make that safe. I do agree, multiple driveways are concerning, we talk about that a lot. I don't know that this property needs two driveways to make it safer for the residents and still provide turnarounds on there. Yeah, I just have a lot of concerns for this, so. Commissioner Parker, if you wanna add anything from an engineering perspective, I would love to hear it.
Without seeing dimensions and turning radiuses on, on trucks, you said it was 220 feet wide, I would think that you could take a single drive in and still have time or room to be able to turn around in there, with proper design, of course. I think it could be done.
Any other Planning Commission discussion? If there's none, I would take a motion.
Move to approve. To be clear, my move to approve is so that we have a not confusing vote.
Yes. Thank you. And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion failed. Seven with one abstention.
Thank you. Moving to our next items, I'm going to read items three and four together. No, I'm so sorry, item number eight and nine and 10 together. Yes, eight, nine, and 10, thank you. Consideration, item eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-49, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman, so as to remove part of the southwest quarter, south of the section 26 Township 9 North, range 3 West of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the PUD Planned Unit Development District and the C2 General Commercial District, and place the same in spud, simple planned unit development district of said city, and providing for the severability thereof, 418 North Interstate Drive. Item number nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-50, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, closing a portion of the 17-foot-wide utility easement located in Lot 2, Block 1, and amended plat of Stidham Edition Number 1, a planned unit development to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of PP-2324-18. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by ORK Oklahoma Realty Norman LLC, Grubbs Consulting LLC, for Sooner Kia Norman, a simple planned unit development for 4.77 acres of property located at 418 North Interstate Drive. I'll take the staff presentation.
Hello, Laura Hoggett. So, I won't read everything up here, but Sooner Kia would like to build a new showroom and kind of redesign their site, so they have some lots that have different zoning, so they need to turn everything into a spud. So, as you can see, there's kinda split zoning, the PUD was from 95, 1995? So, it wasn't written in the traditional, or the format that we use now, they just applied some conditions to it, and the applicant did choose to keep the conditions in their new PUD. And the other sections are zone C2. Sooner Kia is currently there, and they're surrounded to the west and the south with residential, and then commercial across 35 into the north. Here's an aerial of the property as it is today. This is where the right-of-way closure would be. So, just kind of a different aerial perspective. Here's the existing building as it is right now. And looking across 35. Okay, here's a copy of the preliminary plat, and then the site development plan. And the hatch area that would be used for parking is shown on the southwest side. And the applicant is here, and they don't have slides, but they're available for questions, and then staff is available as well, and we forward this request for Planning Commission's consideration.
Thank you. Any questions by Commission for staff?
I have a couple of questions. My first is, what's that easement doing? Is it used by the city at all?
As far as we know, there's nothing in it, and there have been no objections to closing it.
And, and I might ask this for the applicant also, but why not just make everything C2?
They wanted to keep the conditions that were a part of the previous approval, that kinda protected the residential to the west of them. There are protections with like, some landscaping and providing some parking, and then showing just kinda more specifically how the site would be used, so that it would have less of an impact.
So, one more question related to that. If it were C2, so right now, in the narrative, it says they want like a five-foot build line on the north and south from the property line. If it were C2, what would that be? That's real tight, I mean, five feet is real close, and it's bumping right up against residential.
Right, C2 doesn't have large setbacks. I think when it's up against residential, it's just on the rear that they would have 20, but the sides would be zero. And I think typically in C2, their front setback is 10 feet. Should've brought my book up here.
Thanks.
Any other questions by Commission for staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant's presentation, knowing you don't actually have slides, but we're happy to hear you speak.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. So, the purpose of the spud, obviously, there's, so they're incorporating the north lot that's currently undeveloped into the already developed land. They're removing the building and redeveloping it with a new building, cleaning the site up, making it look a lot better, obviously, but there's, there's two different zonings, C2 and the spud, or the PUD, which was, it was back in that time, there wasn't a spud option, I believe, so. Because of that, and because we're developing it all as one lot, we have to combine it into a single lot, which is the purpose of the preliminary plat and the plating. The easement closure, obviously, because the building is going to go over it, and no, there is nothing in the easement, and there's been no objections. And then, the, the reason, instead of going C2, we're obviously using the spud, because it's under five acres. But, essentially, what we did was just copy the contents of the old PUD into the spud, into the new format, with all the same protections that it had historically for the residential to the west, keep the landscape buffer, to add the requirement for the eight-proof, the eight-foot site-proof fence along the west, to keep those barriers in place. And also, the spud, instead of doing C2, it, you know, specifically only allows that use for the automotive sales and the accompanying services that go with that. But, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions by Commission for the applicant?
Just one, the new building, is it gonna be south of the old building? Is that what that large open square is?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the site plan that's currently up there, the gray shade underneath the north portion of that building is the existing building, and then that building extends all the way south to almost that south property line on the east half there. So, yes, it, it does extend south, it, it increases the size of that building quite a bit.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, I have a follow-up question. So, in this, it's interesting, multi-sided piece, that's the dark gray up here. So, what kind of buffers are there between the spud and the residential?
Well, there's, so, to clarify, the dark gray is a no, no automotive sales can happen in that, only parking from the apartments and the employees can park in there. There is a five-foot landscape buffer with trees that exist within that, and that was what was in the original PUD.
I'm, I'm just curious, do you know, do you know how well it works for blocking light and sound from the activity?
I don't. We did put in there that, you know, the lights would obviously meet city code with, with respect to when they abut residential, they have certain requirements to be shaded away from, shielded away, and pointed away from that, yes. But, I couldn't honestly answer that question of how well it works currently.
Do you anticipate having any change to that area? Because it exists today, I mean, you've got the buffer zone correct right now?
Yeah, we don't anticipate changing that area.
Okay, and doesn't appear to have any protests?
Right, so I would assume that it, the way it works today is not bugging them, or they would be here asking me to.
Can I ask a question of the city staff? When these protest letters go out, do they go to residents or owners?
Owners. It's property owners.
It is the, it's county records mailing address, correct?
That's something I do professionally, so.
Well, I feel, well, I'll wait for, I'll, I'll wait for a Commission discussion, sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions for applicant? Seeing none, I would see if there's any audience comments? And seeing none, move to Planning Commission discussion.
Bill, I, I think everyone knows what I'm gonna say. I see a huge, I see a future heat problem with this amount of asphalt and concrete. I don't know what you can do, right? If you go to a car dealership, it's gotta be clear. You know, I don't, I don't go to a car dealership to look at trees, that's fair. But, you know, I do wonder, are there some places that you could put trees in this back parking lot for employees? You know, if you had larger trees there, they would knock out summer heat quite a bit. But, it's just something that, you know, if I say it now, and I know we have a lot of professionals who come to these meetings, you know, every month or every couple of months, and, and when they work with their clients, they'll say, oh, there's that guy who keeps asking about trees that are gonna, you know, stop a heat problem in 40 years. So, at least, at least on that back employee parking lot, there, there might be. at least on that back employee parking lot, there, there might be. If you're not gonna change it, you're not changing it and I respect that. But I'm just thinking about future development, that people should try and work these things in to.
So when I made this statement that we weren't changing, um, I'm talking about the west line. Um, there are, if um, let's, there is a, let's see, can I?
We'll go to the aerial. To be fair, I've never stood up there and everybody seems to have to figure out how to click, so.
Oh my.
Thank you, Laura.
Which one?
What we submit, is it in there?
Oh, I don't think it's in there. It's in their packets though.
So there's a landscape.
If you turn to page seventy-two, if you're packing. Sorry.
We do add additional trees to meet the uh, the current landscape code requirements. Um, there is some additional trees being parked, that be, being planted back there in that west lot, just not. There's existing trees along the west line and we don't plan to disturb that, in other words. But there are additional trees being planted to meet existing code where it doesn't meet code today.
That's nice to hear. Thank you.
I could throw a friendly suggestion that you could also look at a container plant. Container plants can go on top of pavement and could provide some vegetation. Have to be pretty large to give any kind of shade, but can be a meet in the middle. Any other planning commission discussion items for this? If there's none, I would take a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
And a vote, please?
You may vote.
Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving to item number eleven, uh, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two-three-two-four-dash-five-one and ordinance of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending sections thirty-six dash one oh one, definitions, thirty-six five oh eight, non-conforming uses, and thirty-six dash five four eight, off-street parking requirements. All in chapter thirty-six zoning of the code of the city of Norman to remove parking requirements for accessory dwelling units where allowed, to clarify applicability of provisions to garage apartments, non-conformity, and to implement other language changes as are consistent therein and providing for the severability thereof. Staff presentation.
Hello. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, so just a little background on why we are here with another ADU update for you guys. Uh, in December of last year, we went to the council business and community fairs committee um, to talk about ADUs, what they wanted to see. We did not get any consensus at that time regarding parking for accessory dwelling units. Um, it was important to the community to go ahead and get the ADU allowance out there and we knew we would have to come back and maybe add something for parking or, you know, deal with things that might arise as we go forward. Since that time, we've had a little more direction. Um, so as you will see, we are not requiring parking for ADUs that are six hundred and fifty square feet or less. Um, if they want to go over six hundred and fifty square feet for the accessory dwelling unit, they can go to board of adjustment and then they would have to. If they did not want to supply the parking, they'd have to ask for variance for that as well. Am I explaining this well? Am I making sense? Okay, and then uh, in the districts where they're, um, they don't have the six hundred and fifty square foot requirement, they would have to provide the parking because those districts typically have uh, more space than the R one lots that are in the core area or other parts of town. I think that's, that's pretty much our summary of that. Yeah, any questions for me?
Uh, could you just clarify when ADUs are more than six hundred and fifty square feet and just give that little clarification since it's a little bit new for us?
Yes, so uh, the six hundred and fifty square foot requirement is in the R one and R one A, which is single-family detached or single-family attached. Um, in A one, A two, and RE, they could have a, a guest house which was already an allowance in the code, so we didn't want to limit something that they were already allowed to have. The difference is that now those may be rented out or leased, um, and they can have a full kitchen.
Thanks for clarifying that. I was wondering about that. Any other questions by, for staff? Thank you. Uh, since our city was the applicant, is there any audience comments? Seeing none, any planning commission discussion? And if there's none, I would take a motion.
Need to approve.
Second.
And a vote, please?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving to item number twelve and thirteen, uh, to read together. Item twelve, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two-three-two-four-dash-three-five and ordinance of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six two oh one of the code of the city of Norman so as to remove that part of the east half of the section fourteen township nine north, range three west of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the pud planned unit development district and place the same in pud planned unit development district and providing for the severability of thereof, generally located east of I thirty-five between Corporate Center Drive and Rock Creek Road. And item number thirteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash two-three-two-four-twelve, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by University North Park LLC for University North Park Entertainment District, a planned unit development for approximately ninety acres of property generally located on the east side of I thirty-five between Corporate Center Drive and Rock Creek Road. The applicant in the packet, it says postponement, that the applicant has requested postponement in the past. Sometimes this has been continuance, basically means the same thing, so whichever way we care to think of that, uh, to the May ninth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Uh, and I think that's it. We don't vote on these, correct?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would take a motion to uh, vote to approve that postponement.
I make a motion to approve the postponement request, moving it to the May ninth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
I second that.
And a vote, please?
Uh, discussion, real quick. Uh, how many times have we postponed this?
I would venture three times, however, I would, with, this might be a better legal question. Uh, but part of this piece is also in conjunction with other pieces with the TIF. So they are intentionally designed to move together and there could be parts of this project that are also being held up at this point because of needing steps done at other points outside of planning commission. So I, I'm not positive about that, but I believe that that could be part of the purpose of the postponement. Um, I believe we have a representative for the applicant here. If we'd like to call them up to ask about clarification of postponement and continuance, you came all the way, we're gonna make you earn some dollars today.
Thank you.
Just in case, the one time we called you up.
I don't need to say much because you nailed it, Commissioner, but Gunner Joyce on behalf of the applicant, and that is exactly right. So the statutory TIF review committee was just formed, I think, last Friday for this project, had their first meeting. And I think they scheduled it, I apologize, I don't know the next date. But basically, there's a project plan that that body will review, make a recommendation, and then that will also come in front of you on the same night. And then we will have preliminary plat, uh, the PUD and the project plan all together for presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions as to the postponement? That's a good question. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If we are ready to move to a vote, I'd like to do that.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Uh, moving to the next items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Item number fourteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R dash two-three-two-four-dash-one-two-six, a resolution of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman twenty twenty-five land use and transportation plan so as to remove part of the southwest quarter of section eleven township nine north, range three west of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the office designation and place the same in the commercial designation east of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest, north of West Acumza Road and west of I thirty-five. Item number fifteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two-three-two-four-dash-four-two and ordinance of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two oh one of the code of the city of Norman so as to remove part of the southwest quarter of section eleven township nine north, range three west of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the pud planned unit development district and place the same in the pud planned unit development district and providing for the severability thereof, east of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest, north of West Acumza Road and west of I thirty-five. Item number sixteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash two-three-two-four-dash-one-five, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Carroll Farm LLC, SMC Consulting Engineers, PC for Carroll Farm Edition, a planned unit development for property generally located east of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest, north of West Acumza Road and west of I thirty-five. All three of these items, the applicant has requested postponement to the May ninth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Uh, is there a motion or a discussion of these items?
I'm gonna ask the same question because this has been postponed before also. And it would be nice to know why, why things keep getting.
Is your question directed to staff or the represent of the applicant?
Look, it looks like we've got a person who's ready to answer, so I'll, it's directed to that guy.
Twice in one night, making records.
Happy to do it, happy to do it. Gunner Joyce, Regir Law Group on behalf of the applicant. This one uh, is an applicant requested postponement. Uh, internally, we're working on some designs of the layout uh, with some of the lot lines, basically. And wanna make sure that um, we are internally all happy with it before we come to you. Uh, trying to avoid some of the, you know, in-night discussions during the meeting. So that, that's the goal is postpone it.
Are they gonna be happy, though? I mean, this is like the third time at least that it's been on the agenda.
Certainly, I hope so, but uh, can't, can't make that commitment to you.
Do you know how many times this item was postponed previously, just for clarification?
I don't. I think this is the second, that'd be my guess, yeah.
Jane thinks it might be the second too, but we can always go back and confirm as well. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant on the postponement request? Great. Um, all right, moving on, I would take a motion. Again, May ninth, twenty twenty-four would be the next meeting being requested.
Move to postpone to the May ninth meeting.
And a second?
Second.
And a vote, please?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving to item number seventeen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number PCR dash two-three-two-four-dash-one, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, establishing certain policies and procedures relating to the time set for regular meetings of the Norman Planning Commission, providing an effective date and providing a duration for the resolution. Do we have a staff presentation from our director?
Um, good evening. No, technically, we do not have a presentation, but I am happy to discuss this with you. I think you saw in the email that I sent to you, or I attached it to the email that went out with the link, that uh, we do have several, if not all, maybe uh, SVSC is at six o'clock. But I think all of our other boards and commission uh, meetings have been moved to five thirty.
As there any other discussion by commission on this item or questions for staff either? It sounds like we have precedent for moving to five thirty. We have other commissions that have done the same. Um, I'd like to thank Commissioner Jablonsky for bringing this up in a meeting, getting this as an agenda item. I think sometimes it's easy to have discussions and it's glad to see something brought forward. And thank you to staff for so quickly getting it on the agenda, discuss and answer questions, how we would change that. Um, my only other concern was of city council and their oversight committee and their timeframes. I do think it is of value, even though it's not required for Public Meetings Act, to have these on YouTube for broadcast. I actually listen to some of these committee meetings that are recorded later. So the only downside I could see is for oversight committee would have to probably stop their recording and the tail end of that would not be available as easily for public if um, they overlap with us. Um, which generally, I did go back and look on the YouTube, they are about an hour long generally. Um, and wanna make sure our staff has time to move that over and give consideration to everybody that was part of. I know Commissioner Kendall, she made up a lot of good comments about that, about being more considerate to her staff. But being considerate for that component, being considerate to our public as a whole for access to these meetings and to city councilors to be able to complete their meeting within that time period. So I'm in favor of five thirty, as long as oversight pretty consistently ends at five and we give time for everybody to do their stuff, you know? Um, and just kinda continue to be mindful of that if there is overlaps that prevent public access for those meetings.
Yeah, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched it and I do believe, you can just shake your head, but I, I think you said as long as you have thirty minutes to switch, even if we cut it a little close, but still, okay. So that would give plenty of time.
I believe he said something like five fifteen minutes, but we wanna give buffer and not ask anybody to, you know, have to work crazy hours too, so.
I just wanna make sure that this is being considerate of all staff members. I did hear um, some comments there near the close about maybe not being able to see kids at the end of the day or whatnot, um, if they don't have a break in between. So I just wanna make sure that in our effort to keep the day moving and ending it earlier, that that isn't having a negative impact when we're trying to have a positive impact.
Can you just address how you've addressed this with staff, if you asked them or, or how that came up? I saw your email, but clarification of what went behind the scenes for that?
So I, I visited with staff and uh, I'm smiling because staff is extremely excited about the idea of five thirty. And I will say, I think, I think what you're referring to is um, some individuals that might leave at five and then, or they do leave at five and then they come back to the six-thirty meeting. And, and so if they start at five thirty, that might cut them a little close of something that they might need to do at five-ten or something like that. But there's absolutely the opportunity for someone to leave at four-thirty and allowing them the time to take care of something that they might need to take care of to make it back in time for the five-thirty meeting.
Good. It's just, I, I just wanted to make sure our well-intentioned is actually landing the way intended.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
And now the director's on public record saying that she was willing to do that too, so that's also for staff's benefit.
See, look at all their smiles back there.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this item? If not, I would take a motion.
Okay, approve.
Second. Okay. And we are starting that in June.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Before we do our vote, just to clarify on when that would change, uh, she, she said that would begin in June, so that gives a little bit more time. So May will still be at six-thirty, June will be at five-thirty. We'll set our alarms.
It's June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, thank you. Okay, and now I think we can do a vote. Thanks for that clarification.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for commission?
I don't have anything at this time.
Do commissioners have any comments to make? I, um, we have the AIM questions, we have a new. You can always visit and do that. I went to one of the AIM listening sessions today. Um, one comment that I made, that I, I've made previously, but I have been inspired that sometimes when we make comments in miscellaneous discussion, things can happen quickly on that. Um, I would love to see the ad hoc committee for Center City Forum Based Code meet at a regular interval. So to put that of, uh, record on there. Um, we had two projects on Comanche that we had PUDs for, Center City Forum Based Code PUDs. A lot of us discussed whether that should be, but we also, I know I specifically dug in as to why it was zoned that way to begin with. We, I've heard the people that have dedicated huge amounts of time working on this, that this was intended to be a living code, but there is an ad hoc committee, but it is called irregularly. So an average property owner has to request or hope that city councilor or, or that um, So an average property owner has to request or hope that city council or, or that, um, the staff would call an ad hoc committee together for it. Um, if there was a regular interval that citizens would be able to go and request those changes, that they knew when to expect. I don't know that that really would need to be monthly, maybe a consideration for an annual or quarterly, depending on as needs may arise. I think that would be one of the ways that our code does not get so antiquated and require so many PUDs to update and fix and make changes on because I think in some of the cases, we could have made some mapping changes on some of those Comanche ones. That may have been more appropriate for the blocks that we looked at because we talked a lot about the suitability of those particular blocks as being unique. And so maybe they needed to be updated for that and still fit within the code on there. So that would be a comment that I had, and I made that comment in the AIM group also as something to think of as we're making new zoning codes, that that might be a regular process to allow codes to be updated more regularly with input and not get 70 years down the road with small changes. So that was my only miscellaneous comment. Thank you. And if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.